Welcome, today is June 16th, regular council meeting. And I'd like to start with a prayer. And a pledge. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Mel. Council roll call please.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Gertz.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Lindeman.
Here.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Here.
Mrs. Etichico.
Here.
Minutes still haven't come out from me, so they will wait another session. Audience participation, there was an email that came to the clerk, Carla. Do you want to take a read on that Carla for us?
Yeah. This is from Don Lycans. He says, I am Don Lycans and reside at 8415 Reading Road. I own multiple properties around Reading, making my first investment in 1991. So I am committed to making Reading, Reading better as I have a significant investment. I love the Reading Police, but feel over the last six to 12 months, things have changed. Questions, number one. How are, how are we measuring the effectiveness of our Reading Police Department? Number two, can you please provide regular crime statistics on our beloved Reading Police? I would like to know how effective they are at solving certain crimes, such as thefts, burglaries, and would like to see regular monthly reports, these item, monthly reports, these items and more, such as, A, the number of thefts reported per week. B, the number of thefts where someone is actually charged per week. C, the number of thefts reported where someone is actually convicted. D, the number of incidents, incident reports taken per week. E, the number of crimes reported and solved per week. F, etc. Three, I am worried the police are not investigating misdemeanor crimes such as theft, prostitution, etc. A, I have had multiple thefts over the last two years, but can't seem to make any traction on getting police to do more than take a report. Nothing is investigated, nothing is solved. It's a challenge to get traction, non anything leading to a resolution. B, I've been a victim and have witnessed many crimes in recent years, but can't get the police to move towards investigating them. Once I was solicited, I was solicited for prostitution in Reading, but couldn't get our police to investigate. Four, if the police are understaffed, we need to address this, address this soon, as maybe they need more detectives. Don Lycans, and he gave his email address and phone number.
Make a motion, we receive it and file it.
Yeah, comments?
Yes. Chris, I will address this in my.
Mr. Mr. Fish Asher.
Go ahead, Mr. Fish. Yeah, I will address the majority of this in my report.
Okay.
I've, uh. Did you shut my stuff off? I've been in contact the entire week with Chief Edens. I've spoken with Mr. Lycans in detail for lengthy conversations and also through emails. So I'll address this in my report if that would be okay.
Okay, yes, Mr. Lindeman?
That's fine, I already covered it.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Okay. We will go to, uh. Reading of any communications?
That was the only thing I had.
Okay, and I, and kind of fills both of those, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I know I don't really get an opportunity too much to speak, but as we kind of already mentioned earlier, the only thing I wanted to say is happy birthday to this guy here. He turns the big seven five today. I know, uh. We talk a lot about certain folks in Reading and, um, you know, staples of the community, and I especially feel like he is a big staple of this community. And I obviously appreciate him being my father, but, um. I, uh, I really appreciate everything that he's done for the city of Reading as well. He's, uh, he's been in many aspects for the city as well, some other cities as well, but this one especially, this is where he's from, this is his own town. Um, he's known many of you and a lot of people around Reading for a number of years. And, uh, tell you what, I wouldn't be who I am, I wouldn't be sitting here on council if it wasn't for him. So I just want to say thank you and happy birthday to my dad. So, happy birthday, thank you for letting me take the time to say that.
Happy birthday Danny.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday guys.
Happy birthday.
Are you a cornerstone or a keystone?
Well, I'm a stone.
You're a stone, okay, good enough.
Too much you say you got stones.
You read that just as I wrote.
I'll go to, uh, council committee reports, finance chairman, Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an ordinance tonight that has got for a third reading, but I think I mentioned it at last meeting, after having a communication from the law director and discussing it further with him. The ordinance, as he pointed out to me, actually, there is no contract with the school in any shape or form. The contract that was created when that ordinance was adopted has since expired. And, um, the, there were and are some changes. I think I provided that to everyone this, uh, earlier in a later, or should say later part of last week and then earlier today, I had to adjust the preamble to it and the statement itself. But, uh, as T pointed out, there's no reason to have the fund that also, uh, and, and looking at the finances of the city. I don't steal the thunder of Mel or Sabrina, but, uh, I'm guessing that we're going to be behind without question. Sabrina did provide me information to, uh, that, that came from the, uh, the auditor's office that are probably our property taxes are going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% lower than what we anticipated. I don't know how that'll carry out by the end of the year. Our total property taxes, I'm guessing, is around $800,000. Half of it goes to the general fund, half of it goes to the capital fund. So that's about $800,000. It's, uh, still being a projection and it's not confirmed. We'll know more after, I guess, July 15th, when things start to hopefully come in as more tax revenues. But this is what I'm talking about of the property taxes. And as well, uh, in, in, in having our Friday meetings every other week, that ordinance came about, I did have some casual discussion with Mr. Lindeman. And, uh, basically, we would like to disclose that the fund down and put all the money in a general fund. The money that was going in there, actually, the general fund was assuming the obligation of pay. And I don't think there's been anything paid out of there, from my understanding. Over the last few years, uh, last year, we got about $25,000 from the, for the use of the facilities. And, and previous year, something in that neighborhood, I think it was 25, two years ago, and then it was down about 18 or 20 at one time. So, uh, there is an ordinance on the floor that will, I would ask to be amended. If you want to have a fourth reading at some point, I would not object to that. But I have sent that out to everyone, and I think it should be substituted for the existing ordinance. As I mentioned, a quick preview is, is a reduction in property taxes we're anticipating. I, I can't speak to the accuracy of all the earnings tax, I'll leave that up to Mel. I, I would like, I don't know, I don't know if Patrick is here or not, but I wanted to have some discussion with the safety service, I mean, with the finance committee concerning the funds that were put into the FEMA fund, which really were grant monies. And, uh, I think the last meeting I requested, pardon me, that, uh, Mr. Ross provide me with the, uh, monies that were put into the, um, FEMA fund that truly were grants. Now, I think at the last meeting, we took some of that out, uh, that paid for the up, uh, upgrade of the monument that came from a Duke grant, if I remember correctly. But I do need to have that information, I'd like to have a further meeting with the finance committee. I realize that City Hall is not open yet, it's supposed to open up, I'm told, on July, or June the 29th. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't do a, a conference call of some sort and have a finance committee meeting. I do have some other comments later in the meeting, but at this time, that's all I have concerning the finance committee, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Gertz at this time?
I'll make a motion to amend his ordinance, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
That was a motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Mr. Albrecht, I believe, to amend the. Go ahead. Did you say something, Mr. Gertz?
Well, I didn't hear Danny second, but that's fine if he did.
We're having trouble with Dad's computer, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Okay, Mr. Gertz, uh, seconded it, uh, to change the ordinance, uh, title mainly, I guess some of the internal stuff too, to, uh, to, uh, what we were sent out. Uh, all, all in favor of that change?
Yes.
All opposed? Then, uh, the ordinance, uh, the, the updated ordinance will be our third reading today for that ordinance. Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Gertz, utilities, lands and buildings, Chairman, Mr. Lindeman.
Thank you, Chris. I don't want to sound like a broken record, so I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but Anna Kotler has told me again that, um, the bench project is delayed until July, and I'm gonna, I know Patrick's on here, that he can, um, give us some more details about what's going on with that, because, uh, I was hearing some conflicting stories and, and, uh, I was glad to talk to Patrick the other day to get those cleared up, so I appreciate it. Expound on that a little bit. And, uh, I'm gonna say again that any of us are receiving cartons, uh, shipments from different places because of the virus. And I would hope that you break those cartons down and recycle them. I'm also asking people if they're not already signed up for curbside recycling, to consider that. Uh, I think it's a good idea. That's all I have, Chris.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ross, do you have anything to add at this time?
My, my, I, uh, he was breaking up on my end, I both, I don't know if it's my internet, so.
I was just asking you to expound on what's going on with the bench project. I was getting conflicting stories and you straightened those out for me the other day on the phone.
Yeah, it should start first week of July. Sorry, there's a lot going on in the background here. My 98-year-old grandma is hollering at me, not hollering. She doesn't know I'm on, at a meeting. It'll, it should start the first week of, of July. Milk Creek Alliance is, is the project manager on that project. And we're the owners of the project, and there was some confusion on, when, when we do a public works project, um, the contractors are required to have, you know, a bid bond, basically, the, of the amount of the project and proof of insurance. He's the middleman and he was unfamiliar, but we got that cleared up now. As far, you know, we gave him a copy of, of, you know, when we do a road project, the contractors, you know, have to provide those things, and it was the same thing with the contractor. So there was some confusion because he's never kind of handled that, so, um, that's cleared up now.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lindeman, zoning, planning and environment chairman, Mr. Powell.
I have never reported this time.
Any no questions for Mr. Powell, thank you.
I get it, Dave. I get it. He and I. Somebody needs to pause.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, um, I, he and I were speaking the other day about some of the, the question of this ordinance, but the other question I had, I was curious, have we had adjustments in, uh, money going to the building department this year? I forgot to look at that, Dave, are you from mayor? Are we paying for, um, secretarial help in the building department, and I'm familiar with that or not?
That I'm not familiar with, Tony.
Okay, well, I'll look into it, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powell, laws and contracts chairman, Ms. Etichico.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I spoke to Mrs. Hornery and Mrs. Bennis with the school board, and they will be discussing the stadium contract, uh, during their meeting tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM. I also had the chance to meet with Jason Enix, the new superintendent of Reading Schools. And, uh, tonight, I'm presenting the ordinance to move forward with the contract for field usage. It looks like there will be a football and a soccer season this year. So I edit the emergency clause on the ordinance because practices are due to start soon, and the contract will go into effect July 1st. Um, other than that, I, I don't have anything else.
Okay, any questions?
Of course, Daddy.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Um, with them just discussing the contract tomorrow night, um, what are, what are we voting on tonight? Are they, are they gonna come back with anything on the contract, or what, what's been agreed to, or?
Not sure, um, they are going to have their lawyer look at it. He may add something regarding COVID-19, um, just, uh, that's being added to everything now with regard to that. Um, basically, what we vote on tonight will be what Pat will take to them. They do have copies of that lease agreement, so that's what they're gonna be looking over. And, um, I, once we vote on it, and if, um, Patrick takes it to the school, then, um, I guess they'll either come back with something or sign that, what we present.
Okay, thank you.
I, I had a few questions too, I like. Well, I, I didn't get a lot of time, but I think this was a contract that was submitted at one point in time earlier in the year, it is a little disingenuous to me. We started negotiating with them, I think, in November of 19. And, uh, here we are, trying to get a contract for the July the 1st, and we're at a, a meeting here on the 16th of June, and technically, don't have any more meetings that are, uh, gonna happen before the date. And there were some, I didn't get a chance to go through it, but were some accepted. I, I, I remember bringing that up at a committee meeting to this particular proposed contract. I think this is the same one that was proposed, uh, earlier by the administration and through yourself, I think. And this is Etichico, is that accurate or not?
Yes, and let me remind you that we weren't sure if there was going to be a football or soccer season. So negotiations were on hold, that's why, now that we know there is going to be one and practices will be starting, then that's why the negotiations are back on.
Well, I mean, before it was be presented to the school, uh, there, I had a few exceptions. I did run through it pretty quickly here before the meeting, about an hour ago. And, uh, there were a few things I had liked to at least discuss by the committee, or before we, uh, we actually submit a proposal, um, there were, I, I, originally, I did not agree with any $25,700 because I thought we were being, uh, uh, shortchanged, I guess is the best word, from Jan, January 1st through July 1st. But under the circumstances with the virus and everything that's been going on, I probably could live with the, um, proposed payment, um, and a one-year extension. I'm glad it's only one year. But there were some other i- issues that I had in the contract. I, I don't want to be responsible for the lighting at Veterans Memorial Stadium. If something goes out, I'm questioning the 50/50 share on if there's some kind of other problem or catastrophic issue. Uh, one of the items talks about they can do, put any kind of building they want up and so forth, but I think they've certainly got to meet the building codes. I'd like to have a little more city control over what's gonna go where. And so there were a few little exceptions, so I was hoping to have a first reading if they can, uh, you know, I mean, there's nothing to prevent us from having, I guess, a special meeting between now and July 1st and, or it wouldn't be the worst thing, uh, I don't know when the first meeting is in July, frankly, that they would be retroactive, should not be a problem, I don't know if we have to pass it tonight. I think it's something to submit to the school board, but I'd like to see them approve something before we decide to vote that we approve it as well.
Well, this is the contract that they had originally been on board with before the shutdown happened. So, um, this is almost identical to the previous contract that expired in December. That's been in place for years, so.
Yeah, I don't think this is identical to the contract we had in previous years, there's some, plus regardless, there were some changes. We were talking in committee about before the virus and, of changing some of these things. I don't think they're monumental, I think they can be ironed out. I'm, I'm not enthused about this contract, but I probably could personally, I'm just enthused with it, but I could probably live with it for two years with a few exceptions. That's where, I mean, that's where I'm coming from, as a member of the committee.
Okay, uh, we will get to that when we, uh, bring this up for a reading. Again, uh. Thank you, Mrs. Etichico, laws, laws, uh, public health and safety chairman, Mr. Fish Asher.
Thank you, Chris. As I stated over the past week, I've been in contact with Chief Edens on several occasions. I've talked to Patrick. Resolving in, this all started because Mr. Lycans called me a little over a week ago. And we had about an hour talk about different things, and a lot of which he brought up in a letter to council. Several issues that were raised by Mr. Lycans, uh, after speaking with Chief Edens, were unfounded and others are being addressed or followed up on by the department. Some of these are getting updates and, uh, without getting into too much detail in this public forum, I, I'll attempt to address some of the concerns in his letter. But again, you guys must realize that some of these cases are still open, so I can't really delve too deep into them. Um, firstly, you know, the, the issue with statistics and everything, Chief Snow, and I assume Chief Edens will now, uh, gave him, gives administration statistics as the number and types of calls they have on a monthly basis. The department also is, uh, I've been putting out an annual report with additional statistical information in it. However, again, if you recall, the company responsible for electronic record keeping had a major crash and had not been backing up our data. As a result, we lost a good chunk of data for quite some time. Since then, we have been able to, uh, regain some of that data, or not, I guess about 90% of it. And we have switched to a new company. But we did, uh, the annual report for last year did fall through the cracks, you know, with Chief Snow leaving and, and interim chief and a new chief, um, but I'm sure that will rectify itself in the year to come. One of the other things that, talking with Chief Edens, one of the other things you need to know is that, once the case goes to trial, the report is closed. The department does not, um, have the resources or time to track down every case to see what the outcome of the trial is. So once it's in trial, as far as the police department is concerned, it's over. As for the notion of nothing being investigated or follow-up, Chief Edens pulled, uh, all the records from 1997 on that dealt with Mr. Lycans, um, and all the reports. So I'll just kind of go through a few of those with you. On, for, uh, for 1997, uh, he had a complaint about, about a tenant, he was given an option of mediation or criminal, but he was a little disappointed that they wouldn't charge, uh, or I'm sorry, criminal referral, but he, he was disappointed because they wouldn't arrest the tenant. Um, the one that he keeps bringing up is a property damage file that, um, was quite lengthy, actually, the both report and I've got the email trail. Um, that actually did go to court. Um, but what, what ended up happening, the car that caused the damage ended up being, and the driver of the car ended up being, uh, a suspect and wanted by Cincinnati Police for a shooting farther south on Reading Road. So the car, the guy had taken off, the car and all the evidence was given to Cincinnati Police. So indirectly, Reading Police, um, solved Cincinnati Police's, uh, shooting crime. They did, Reading Police did charge, uh, the driver, uh, with, uh, traffic violations and leaving the scene and a couple other things. And it did go to trial, and Mr. Lycans was aware of it going to trial. But the part as far as the damage, Mr. Lycans didn't show up for the trial to testify, and therefore, the judge dropped it. He was then told by the prosecutor's office to, he could refile it, or the police would have to refile it, and somewhere along the line, that got dropped. But it is, the charges are gonna be refiled. But again, if he doesn't show up again, uh, it will be dropped again, so. There was a, uh, on, uh, November of 2011, there was a breaking and entry complaint. There was no subjects, no evidence, no time, and it was a vacant piece of property. So there was nothing the police could do as far as follow-up on that one. Um. Uh, on June of 2019, he called for a suspect, uh, that was stealing electricity from him. They traced it down, uh, and the suspect was charged with, uh, theft of, uh, services and sentenced to, or, uh, cited to mayor's court. On July of 2019, a car in a mart across the street, I believe it was, uh, rolled out. The guy had gotten out, didn't put it in park, the car rolled across the street and damaged one of his walls. The, uh, the driver of the car was cited to mayor's court. But again, Mr. Lycans wanted restitution, and that's really not their job. You know, his, technically, his, uh, insurance company should go over that, over, go after the, uh, the driver's insurance. Then we get to, uh, we get to the one where he talks about being, uh, solicited. When he called and requested the police, the only thing he wanted was a report for an eviction hearing. Uh, the report was made, and he was fine with that up until, uh, the time he started talking to me about the other ones evidently. There was no way, there was no evidence, um, that this went on, and obviously, they would not side her on a he said, she said. Um, on August of 2019, I'm sorry, that's the one where Mr. Lycan failed to show for court, and it's since been refiled. There's, there's a lot of files here, guys. I'm sorry it's taking me this long. Um, September of, of twenty nineteen. There was a suspect arrested for trespassing. And he was upset, I think because it. It went to mayor's court. But it was thrown out because initially the girl who was the actual tenant. Said that the guy wasn't allowed in there. But after the cop or after the police had cited him. Um. Took him back to the station and cited him. She called and said that. He actually was allowed to be in there, but she knew that Mr. Lichten's would probably evict her if, uh. If he found out that she was letting other people stay there. So. She was told to come to mayor's court and. Explain it there and evidently it was thrown out in mayor's court. Then, uh, September of twenty nineteen, he called because somebody was sitting on their steps. Police went up and asked him to move on and he did. April of twenty twenty, Mr. Lichten's advised of a civil issue with a tenant. This had to do with, uh. Some cabinets and a stove. That. He said the tenant stole. When officers talked to him and Chief Edens was the, uh. The command officer of the shift. And he was contacted and agreed with the siding officer or the report officer. That this was going to end up being, he said, she said, because the tenant admitted that they took. The stuff for scrap. Only because Mr. Lichten's. At the time that they took it. Gave them permission to go ahead and take it for scrap. But afterward changed his mind and they wanted the police to cite them. So he wasn't overly happy because they wouldn't, but there was. No way of proving one way or the other whose. Stuff it was because she was actually living there. Um, it's a single, uh, house. And she was the actual tenant. So that was moved on, uh. Then the last contact was six, six of twenty few days. Few days ago. And that was a dispute between Mr. Lichten's and. Uh, the owner of property across the street from him. And that was resolved by the officer by telling each party to stay on their own side of the street. So to say that it wasn't all followed up, every one of these. There is follow up. You know, Mr. Lichten's, uh. Seem to think that every complaint should be sent to the prosecutor. And doesn't like the fact that the police can make determinations of whether there's enough evidence to take to court or not. So, you know, I, I really don't know. I'm gonna, uh. Stay with Chief Edens on this. Uh, he and I will be meeting again. You know, I've already talked to him about. Uh, some reports and possibilities of getting reports. This year's data is on two different. Uh, systems, so it's, it's quite complicated. To, uh. To try to get like. Reports to blend in, it's gonna, that's gonna end up being something that they have to do manually. So, um. You know, it's not being overlooked, you know, I want you to know that. Uh, I took it very serious when I talked to Mr. Lichten's, um. You know, I've, I've dealt with the, the Lichten's family. For thirty years and, uh. You know, um. Everything, everything, you know, I thought we had things straightened out, but as soon as you think you're there, then he. Kind of turns it all back around again, you could keep going in circles, so. You know, uh, I'll just leave it at that and. Ask if anyone has any further questions.
I'll just say, Randy, that it seemed like this should have been a personal conversation with Mr. Lichten's and maybe you've already done that. But, um. Uh, the thing that I did hear from you is that you're gonna talk to Chief and see if there may be some kind of. Reports that, uh, he's asking about generally speaking, not specific, but, uh. I did hear that.
Yeah, he's, I mean, you know, it. I asked for, I said, what have you, what have your guys done? Cause I really wasn't sure what Mr. Lichten's was looking for. So after the first conversation with them, you know, I called down and asked, uh, Chief Edens. You know, what, what are these guys looking for or what kind of report can you give me as far as how many runs? What they were over the last three months and he pulled up. The report, which was quite lengthy, actually, um. Within, I don't know, fifteen minutes. And he can give me stuff like that. Now, if I want to get into more detail of, okay, how many of those went to court, how many didn't? That becomes more of a. Tracking problem because. It has to be done manually right now because of the two systems. Now he said down the road, you know, if you, once we start pulling just data from the one system that they're using. It looks like it's going to be able to give us those type of reports. Once it's all on one system. If that makes sense to you, Don, but.
Yes, I just question is that if this information's available to you, would it be available to Mr. Lichten or anybody else?
Yeah, but I, I talked to him. I don't think it's what he's looking.
Uh, going over this sort of thing.
Okay, I lost your volume on that, but, uh. I, I don't think that's what he's looking for. You know, a- after I talked to him, uh, the first time, Don, that. I don't think, I, I don't think he'd be happy with report.
Hey, the truth, it doesn't mean like it's an administration problem, then, uh, it should be more aggressively dealt with through the. You know, the. Safety Service Director and or the police chief and I think you've done all you can do, Randy.
I have just a, a comment. I, I too have, uh, had multiple opportunities to speak with Mr. Lichten's over the last, uh. Month or so about various issues. Uh, my only comment is that. I guess the report that's provided to the administration as far as police activity. That would, uh, be something of interest that, you know, I would almost. Yeah, like, like to see distributed to council, so we're kind of kept, uh, abreast on what is. Going on in the city and, and whatnot. I think it would be pertinent to what, what we do, so that, that would be my only comment on it.
Those were given by, uh, in a marriage report. When he used to give his reports to counsel.
I, I can forward you what, what the chief sends over. He sends it over electronically, so that's easy enough to forward. Uh, uh, the only thing I will comment is we have dealt, uh, I've dealt with the, this property owner. Um, and I fully back my chief and his handling of this, of the cases that he's dealt with, with him. Um, you know, you're, you're not going to please everybody and you're not going to. Make everyone happy and, and I've learned that. Um, with certain people, you can't make them happy no matter what and. I, but I do back my, my chief and h- how he's handled. A lot of these issues that were brought up. Um, I mean, he says that so solicitation, we don't arrest anyone. The same day that we had an issue down at the BMV. We, we had an arrest for solicitation, um, the exact same day. And the, the, that did not make the news. Um, but I, I, I'm gonna stop addressing him. I did have my hand raised. I don't know if we're doing that.
Yeah, I didn't, I.
Will I lower my hand, but I, I, I'm gonna just focus on the positives of the Reading Police Department and I'm very proud of the work that they do. Um, they are. What, when, since I've been here, I've been a part of, you know, a number of swearing in of new officers. Um, and I know the thing that, that the mayor says and I do, and I echo this is. You know, the only thing we ask, you know, not just police officers, but all of our public employees. Is that they, they treat their fellow workers and the community members and the residents with respect. And if they do that. You know, we will have their backs. Um, if they. Do not do that, we will not. And. One fine example, and I did copy, uh, uh, Randy as the. Safety chair that I sent to, I'm, I'm gonna name him, um, cause. You know, I think positive things need to be shared as well as all the, you're filled with negative. Officer Eric Leininger, who's been with us since two thousand and ten, um, there was a kind of. Semi-viral pictures spread around the city of Reading on various social medias. Of one of our officers on Mechanic Street playing basketball. With three to four kids, um, this past weekend. And I couldn't even tell who it was because the person must have been driving by and just saw it. He obviously wasn't doing it for like, hey, here's a picture, let's take one, like, you couldn't even tell the face. I had to ask somebody who it was. Um, but that is what the Reading Police Department is. Um, that is what, we're happy that. You know, Chief Edens believes in community oriented policing. Um, not just sitting in your car and writing tickets. You know, our police officers are encouraged to do things like that. And that is the norm for our, the police department. Um, and I'm proud of the police department that we have here in Reading. You know, if we do have issues, they are addressed, um. You know, right away, so I just wanted to add some positive and I, I do want to add. You know, the situation at the BMV, that could have been. As bad as. Um. You know, we had a, a gentleman who I think he had some, some mental health issues going on as part of his issues because he was. You know, up and down with who, who he liked, who he didn't like the whole time. Um, from one end of the spectrum to the other, you know, waving a gun, pointing it at. People in, in line, but that ended with. You know, no shots fired, the, the person immediately threw the weapon down. You know, there was no incident and, and that's, that's the norm, you know, our, our guys have thousands and thousands of interactions. With the public, you know. Um, throughout a year and. Um, I, I'm proud of the work that our guys do here in Reading, so, sorry, I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, thanks, Patrick. Okay. Anything else for, I'm gonna guess that was, uh. Fishers report.
Yeah.
Uh, service chairman, Mr. Albrecht. You're on mute there, Mr. Albrecht.
I'm sorry, we're working through the computer problems, serious.
I have no report for this evening.
All that for no report.
I told him to sing to himself, but. We got kind of serious there, so.
All right.
We're going to Gregorian chant probably.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Albrecht and then recreation chairman, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you very much. Um, as I mentioned last time, we're on council, the, the pool does open on Monday. So that's six twenty-nine, that's this coming Monday. Uh, Saturdays, they do have signups, so signups will be, uh, between ten and twelve. At the pool, um, so if you go down, I, we ask that you bring all the family members because. There are some different roles this year, no guests this year at all, so you have to be a member, uh. Again, there will be no concessions and you must bring your own chair, so you can bring food, you can bring. Something to drink, but nothing in any glass. So, uh, the pool does open. I'm excited that the pool is opening and, uh, I think it's good for the city. Um, with that, I would like to talk about the, um. Because I think it affects the parks, uh, because the stadium fund is being depleted. And I would like to talk, then I know a lot of people and I don't truly disagree that the city shouldn't be in the stadium business. But the truth is, we are in the stadium business. So I'm not sure I want to deplete the whole stadium fund. I'm okay with, you know, withdrawing money to definitely pay for any cost. That we had in, in twenty twenty and two thousand and nineteen for the stadium, so if that's. Fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars, I'm totally comfortable with that. But depleting the whole fund, I am not comfortable. Um, I feel that it gives us some leeway. I know that, uh. Earthline, Bethany, St. Gabe's, they all, you know, were going to rent and, and practice on our track. You know, we can leverage that kind of stuff, do contracts with them to help us improve our track. If we have money in the stadium fund, those are the things we got to look at and try to do. So I am not comfortable in depleting the whole fund. I am comfortable in withdrawing some money. So that's just something I want to put out there, something to discuss. I understand that there, there are worries about the COVID nineteen affecting the general fund. But there's other funds out there that have much more money than this. So, uh, I know the sewer service fee has about five times the amount of money. Than this fund has, so if there's money that we're worried about, maybe we should pull some money out of the sewer service fee. So that's just something I want to put out there and discuss because I do with, uh, think that this affects the parks. And I do like having money for possible part of stadium improvements. Because even though a lot of people want to get out of the stadium business. We have that stadium still and we're still in the stadium business. We have a contract that's being discussed right now at the school, so I think it's, it's something we need to stay. Uh, look at and keep. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hey, hey, just one correction, the, uh, pool isn't going to open Monday, it'll be a week from Monday. The twenty ninth.
Is it the twenty ninth or the twenty second that it opens?
Uh, you said the twenty ninth.
Well, I think it does open on Monday, this Monday, so it's the twenty second is my.
Okay.
So I made a mistake when I said the twenty ninth, it's the twenty second.
Okay. Very good, nice catch. Anything else for anyone? Uh, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Uh, any new business that we want to, uh, bring up that might go into a committee? Okay, we will go to reports of officials. We have no, uh, report from the mayor, but safety service director, Mr. Ross. You're on mute, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, sorry about that. City Hall will, will open to the public beginning on June twenty ninth, that's Monday. The hours, um, temporarily. Most likely through July thirty-first will be ten AM to three PM. Um, due to mayor's court. On. July fourteenth and twenty-eighth, the offices will close at one PM. Customers will be limited to one in the tax office, one in the water building slash general offices at the same, at a time. You'll be direct, you'll. Enter from the Pike Street side of the building. And there will be X's on the floor marking off, you know, proper distance between. People that may have to wait in line. And normally we wouldn't have to wait in line, but since the tax filing deadline was pushed back to July fifteenth. And Mel might be able to tell you how many more people need to file, but I, I think it's still quite a few. That still need to file their twenty, two thousand and nineteen taxes, so we do anticipate some lines, so there will be marks on the floor. Uh, when you, when you're finished with your business in the general offices, there will be arrows directing you to exit via the police side of the building. Um, the only caveat to that is if we have people that, um, require the use of an elevator, they'll be allowed to exit on the Pike Street side as well. Um. The public restrooms will be closed upstairs. We do encourage all customers to still mail in. Or drop off in the box on the corner of Pike and Market Street. Your water payments, any of your tax documents. I mean, you do not need to come in and, and hand. Um, Mel's, Mel's employees, your tax documents. If you put in, in an envelope, in a box. You know, your W twos, your, all, whatever paperwork you need, and if you don't know what paperwork you need. Call seven three three zero three zero zero and you can talk to one of the tax clerks and they will tell you exactly what you need. So if they get the stuff in, in the mail or dropped off. They'll process it, they'll either tell you you owe nothing or you owe something. And then they will mail it back to you, you just sign it and return it with payment, or if you don't know anything, just return that. So we're, we're still encouraging people. Um, to do so, but you will during the ten AM to three PM starting July or. Starting May, June twenty ninth, be able to come into. Um, City Hall. We, we did receive the easement check from MSD, so that was deposited. Um, regarding this, their stormwater project for the easements. So that money did come in, I know you, we were wondering, you know, when that was going to come in, so I did receive that check Friday. Um, we have, I, I sent four ordinances over to you, um, I believe one of them was left off the agenda. Um, we have, I, I sent four ordinances over to you. Um, I believe one of them was left off the agenda. That's okay. Um, it, it is for the payment of, of our employee, John Boguski. Um, so if, uh, if somebody could please make a motion to add that to the agenda, I would appreciate it. And, and if anybody has questions, why, the work, everyone should have received this cuz I sent it last Friday. Um, it is being paid directly to his widow. Um, what, all employees that work here have a beneficiary designation form that, that states that any unpaid vacation, any, anything that's owed to them upon their death, if they have a designated beneficiary, will be paid to that person. So that is why it's not being paid out to John Boguski or his estate, it's paid directly to his, um, his widow. The other one is for Kevin Knizner. Um, and that will be if, if, um, pass will be spread over twelve months. The third ordinance is, is an ordinance to fix approximately ninety feet of, of eroding creeks. If you've driven up Hunt Road recently between Furman and Waxwing, you, you, on the left side, you will notice some caution tape marked off because um, kinda right off the sidewalk, it starts to, i- it's kind of a dangerous situation there. So, um, that will, that will shore up that and stabilize that. And the fourth one is regarded to, and I think, I'm not sure who received some of these emails, but they're finally the CARES Act, money is being allocated um, from the federal government to the state, to the county. Uh, we are required to pass the resolution that you were sent. That, the bigger things of that i- is, it does not necessarily mean that we, what money we get, we get to spend it all. We have to make sure that the expenses, the money that we spend are for expenses that were unexpected due to Corona. Any overtime, buying PPE, just all these things. And, and all of our departments have been tracking that and are still gonna track it because um, it's for a period through this entire year. So I did receive an email after I, um, put my report together, that the amount will be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we will receive. One other aspect that we were required to do is to, um, apply on the state's website, their grant, their grant program website for that. So I've already completed the grant program, the grant application. And they accept, and they said they received it. The, the only other thing we have to do is pass this resolution. The way we can reimburse ourselves for unexpected coronavirus, um, expenses. Um, but in, probably in the next month, um, we will, will have an ordinance to replace, um, the server and the general offices and the water offices. Um, we are gonna be, um, combining our server with the police department server. They're in need of one as well, so um, in an effort to save some money, we're gonna combine those servers. And we potentially may include the fire department server as well. Um, the IT person internally in the fire department is on vacation, so he's gonna speak with them on Monday to see if it would make sense to add them. Um, last thing is our playgrounds did open, um, last week. Um, and we were given permission for our shelters to be rented. There are, when you, if you do res, rent a shelter, you will receive a paperwork um, from the state of Ohio that was given to us that we have to comply with. Before someone asks, on the paperwork, it talks about employees must ensure this. Um, the Hamilton County Health Department knows that we rent the parks and there's no employees there. So we're encouraging, if you do rent a park, or if you're at the playgrounds, to continue to practice safe social distancing, um, measures and um, and that's all I have for tonight, Chris.
Pat, quick question. When you talk about dropping the tax documents off in the box, is that the water department? Box next to the parking lot?
Yes, the silver box there. And, and, and during this, since we've been closed to the public, we're down there probably every other hour or so. So we're getting it regularly and, 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 I mean, Michelle Kramer in the tax office, I mean, she's able to, I mean, because people aren't in the office, I mean, they're processing that, getting it out the next day in the mail, and people are getting it quickly turned around. So yes, the silver box, um, that most people know is where you put your water payment, you know, when we're closed. Um, you can put an envelope and put your tax documents in there as well.
Got another couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Gertz.
Uh, do we, you anticipate that we have spent as much as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for coronavirus?
No.
Okay. So we don't know what that number is. We, we could get up to that amount, is that what you're saying?
We can get up to that amount. Um, w- we're still, we're, we're calculating it every payroll. I mean, so, some of the expenses, I mean, we had to redo the, um, the fieldhouse. You know, we had to set that up for Mayor's Court, which, uh, Mayor's Court will be there. Um, well, I don't, I don't know if we have it next week, but we will be back to Mayor's Court at City Hall on July fourteenth. Um, so, but that's one example, you know, we had to expend extra things for that. Our fire department has purchased things. We had to bring a guy, we had one per, one member of, of the police department who uh, had symptoms of coronavirus and was required to quarantine for fourteen days. So we had to cover his shifts with overtime. Those are the kind of eligible expenses that we'll be able to recoup.
Okay. Uh, I, I know, um, the, um, court has been held in the, uh, fieldhouse and uh, is there any discussion that the possibility that we continue, or the, or the police and the, and the, um, law director and administration exploring that possibility? The, we had talked about that in the past, even possibly moving it to a another location to keep the, all of the traffic away from the City Hall building for the people in my world who are having issues with parking all the time, where we, every, uh, time we have Mayor's Court. And it seemed to me, in discussing it casually, I don't know if Dave is here tonight, I forgot. But, but it seemed to me that it, uh, with the parking and everything, it was, it would have been a good idea to, to have it there, very convenient.
It, it, uh, it would be good if nothing else were there because we've been closed. You know, we haven't had our normal, you know, senior citizens in there playing chair volleyball, or regular volleyball, the badminton groups. So i- it's worked because the building has been e- empty this entire time. Um, and they're experiencing some other issues. It's an older building and there is no air conditioning, so you have to have fans in there to have some flow, and it's extremely loud. So it's, it's not, that building is not an ideal building for a permanent, um, Mayor's Court.
Well, we had also had some discussions about an alternative source, which, uh, maybe I can talk today, but we were thinking of moving it up to a contract with, um, possibly the American Legion or someone like that to, to use, to, to get the traffic and, uh, and everything away from City Hall on, uh, court dates, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's still being explored by the administration or not.
Not at this time.
Okay. And then the other question I had, we talked casually today about, and, uh, we're fixing the problem that's more, uh, uh, it's more recent on Hunt Road, but we've had a a problem that's been existing for a much longer period of time. Uh, are you planning on trying to communicate with the county? I talked to you about the pylons, uh, that they put in some years ago down along, uh, Hunt Road closer to, uh, Columbia Avenue. But this is the spot up there, you know, where I'm talking about where the fencing goes along there.
The fence is up.
Yeah, and somebody's telling me more recently that the sidewalk is starting to lean, so I, I don't, I'm hoping that we're still exploring the possibility of getting some help from the county to try to fix that. That's, uh, I, I know that the road apparently is on bedrock, but I don't think the rest of it is.
Yeah, we, we will look in, in, into that. Our, our immediate concern with this one was, was just the safety issue of it, cuz when you stand over it, it, you know, we don't want a kid that's walking down the street. Um, I mean, it's, you know, it's a probably a fifteen-foot drop right down into it, so right now, the immediacy of that was just to shore up something that was a safety issue. But the long-term, yes. The, the sidewalk is, um, I mean, the road is, as you said, on bedrock and pretty stable, but you know, um, it, the, looking into a permanent solution for the sidewalks up there will be something we will explore.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead. Hold on, Tom, who, who's, uh, yeah, Tom Lynn, and I'll come back to you, Randy.
Why don't you wanna make a motion that we add the John, John Babukey's ordinance?
Boguski.
John Babuski, okay?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Lynn, seconded by Mr. Fish Asher to add the second ordinance, uh, for John um, I,
Hi.
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 All right, all, 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 and all disprove. Then we will go ahead and add that ordinance to the, uh, to the agenda.
Sorry about that, I just missed it when I was scanning through it, my bad. I'm sorry.
Uh, Randy, what, did you have something?
Yeah, Patrick, is, uh, Dan Brooks keeping hours still?
Yes, he is. He, he's been back probably for last month now. So he's back to his normal Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, cuz I was talking to one of the residents recently and it's seemed like a long time to be getting permits back. That's why I kinda wondered.
Uh, I mean, well, depends on What's that? Well, cuz a pool permit isn't as simple necessarily as a pool. Well, I, I, this is the most I've ever seen pool permits, by the way, but you need, you also need a fence with a pool. It's not as simple as just a pool. So you also need a zoning permit for the fence that's being put up, well, cuz a lot of places don't have a fence. And then a couple people that wanted a permit, then, or wanted a fence, also wanted a six-foot fence, which then makes it, you need a variance for a six-foot fence. So I, I know that he's been turning him around because I've kinda been middleman. You know, I said, hey, give me the documents and I will make sure it gets to him directly. So I know that they've been turning, turning him around because I, we've been delivering them to people that come to City Hall and we give them their permit, so.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of pools being put in.
Yeah, there's a specific one that's
What size pools require a permit?
I
What size pools, I mean, like, a, a little kiddie pool, it's, uh, above ground?
Um, I believe it's, I believe it's thirty-six inches and above, but um, but I, I don't handle that on a day-to-day basis. I believe it's thirty-six inch. So even some ones that might not seem like big pools still require it because you do have the, unfortunately, as we know in this town, you have the ability for a young one to climb into one, so.
Okay.
I had a question, too.
Go ahead, Mr. Gertz.
Uh, I was curious, who's the new, uh, member of the zoning board of appeals that took Mrs. Etichiko's place?
Um, Scott Feld.
Paul Scott Feld?
Yeah, lives up in Waxwing.
Yeah, I know.
Up in Maple Tree.
Uh, also, um, the, uh, I, I wanna ask again to get the, all of the grant monies that went into the FEMA fund. Could you get me the, the copies, so I can have a finance committee, uh, meeting relative to setting up a new fund?
Okay.
And then just responds to, well, go ahead, I'll, I'll talk when we do the ordinance. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else from Mr. Ross? All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Um, Law Director, Mr. Stevenson.
Chris, I have no report. I, I would like to follow up a little bit on Mayor's Court. There is Mayor's Court again next week. Um, and after that, the first, the, uh, uh, the next court after next week, it would be on July the fourteenth. Um, we've not seen a, uh, crush of people, uh, coming to these courts, so my guess is the first several, uh, once we're back in City Hall, we'll be fairly light. Um, we're not seeing, eh, we probably had forty people today. Uh, it went very smooth, we were done in about forty-five minutes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson. Treasure, Mr. Gertz. Thanks, Chris. Um, just a brief report. As of close of business yesterday, we've collected almost four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars this month. We are still running about fifty-six thousand dollars behind as compared to last uh, June in two, or two thousand nineteen. And as I've said multiple times, you know, the, one of the biggest shortfalls is in the, uh, individual uh, income tax payments, which we all know has been extended through July fifteenth. So our, our, uh, hope and our goal is that, and as Patrick was saying earlier, we're encouraging everyone to get those taxes paid and get them filed. And, uh, we're feeling that we should be able to collect the majority of that shortfall here in the individual tax um, group, if you will. So, uh, and as Patrick said too, and I'll reiterate, please put your tax documents in the box out there on the corner of Market and Pike Streets. We are turning them around in a twenty-four-hour time. If you've got any questions, call the tax department. Once again, that number is seven three three zero three zero zero. And they will be glad to help you, um, get that done as quickly as possible. So that's, that's really all I had for, uh, the finance update. And I do have one point of clarification, Patrick. You talked about the, uh, servers and the consolidation and all that. I've had, uh, a lengthy discussion with the new vendor who will be providing, uh, the new servers and the ongoing support and service, et cetera, et cetera. And as I've done for the last twenty-seven years, the tax department will have its own server. I am not consolidating it with any other servers in the city. It will be standalone, just so you know. And we can talk more about that online, but that is the direction that I'm going to my department. Okay. And that's all I've got unless anybody has any questions. All right, thank you, Mr. Gertz. And Auditor, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Chris. I just have the update that I'm finishing up the audit for the two years twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. The gap audit was filed for twenty nineteen and approved by the Auditor of State's Office. So I'm just waiting to finish up a last few things. Some of the delay has been, they asked for our financial institutions like Fifth Third, Med account that we deal with for ambulance services, um, US Bank to send back clarifying information on money that was paid to us, or money that was owed to us in the account balances at the end of the year. Um, and so there's been some delay of that because of everyone working at home. Um, which I think leaves them just to ask a bunch of other random questions, and Patrick knows that as well as all the departments here. So we're trying to get through that the best we can, um, as well as being, that they're doing all that now from satellite versus coming on for another week. They were here a total of four days. Um, that's the only update for my department tonight, and then I will have some um, just information things for the community later. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. No questions? We will go to reading of resolutions.
I'm gonna mute myself. All right. A resolution affirming that all funds received from the County Virus Relief Distribution Fund for cer- pursuant to SB three ten be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section five zero zero one of the CARES Act.
Motion to suspend the rule requiring the second and third.
Motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Mr. Albrecht, to suspend the rule that requires a second and third reading. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gertz? Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher?
Yes.
Mrs. Etichiko?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Motion ma, motion to adopt made by Mr. Lindeman, seconded by Ms. Etichiko. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gertz?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Fish Asher?
Yes.
Mrs. Etichiko?
Yes.
That ordinance is, that resolution is adopted, resolution number?
Uh, resolution twenty twenty twenty-three R.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, and the first ordinance is third reading of an ordinance directing the transfer of a hundred thousand from the stadium fund to the general fund and declaring an emergency.
Let's uh let's have the the reading.
Let's let me there. I set the new one out.
I'm sorry.
Correction.
Yeah, let's let's read the uh the new.
The caption, all of the funds. I sent it out today. The correct caption.
Okay, I'll I'll read it.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance directing the transfer of the balance remaining in the stu- stadium fund to the general fund and declaring an emergency.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to reiterate a lot of what Mr. Lynn said. Um, the one thing about this ordinance is that it reads under the presumption that, you know, future contracts, which we are currently working on a contract again. Um, and again, with the COVID and shutdown being uncertain of seasons, if we were gonna have football, soccer. Um, so that's what put that on hold. Um, so that's why that was shelved, but it now it does look like there will be a football and a soccer season and practices will be starting. So there will be another contract in place. Um, and again, like Mr. Lynn said, um, the stadium is still used by the public daily. There's people that walk the track every day. Um, so I don't feel like we should empty this fund when there are repairs that are needed. And again, to um, kind of piggyback off Mr. Lynn that um St. Ursuline and other schools could pay to use that and we could um make some money off that field. I also did have a question as to, um, if there was a hundred thousand dollars in that fund, why more of it hasn't been spent throughout the years too? Um, for repairs and a new track and things that are needed at the stadium.
Well, the money, money was put in there for maintenance of the field. Uh, you know, we negotiated from something like nine thousand dollars a year, which we thought was ridiculous as far as what it costs to maintain field, pay for the water, fertilizer, uh, cut the grass, et cetera, et cetera. So that money supposed to go in there for maintenance, and it should have gone into the general fund. And cuz that's where the expenses are extracted from. Uh, so the stadium fund, it's kind of double dipping it. You charge a fee the least of the stadium, and then you put that money in there.
Go ahead, Mr. Fish Asher.
I thought it was Dave Stevenson.
It was. I that fund was not created as a maintenance fund for the field. Uh, it was created for more long-term improvements. Uh, the original contract that was entered into in two thousand and one had a uh all of the user fees were gonna go into that fund, and they were to be used for capital improvements as determined by the facilities committee of the uh uh stadium and the recreation, which included people from the school and people from the city. So it was not intended as a maintenance fund. Uh, the reason nothing's ever been paid out of it is because it was never directed and the agreement expired. Um yeah, the agreement that uh Mr. Cox drafted did not include the uh perpetuation of that fund. So it's been sitting there basically since the agreement expired, I think, back in two thousand nine.
I know that there, I know that money has been taken out of that stadium fund.
Greg, get up, Mr. Linderman.
Two dollars and fifty cents was extracted from that fund in May.
Well, it's my understanding that Patrick told Sabrina in twenty twenty that any any maintenance fees that are coming should come out of that fund. So starting in twenty twenty, that was something that we were gonna try to work on. So some of that fee, we were trying to make that happen.
Right, and regardless if the school plays there or not, we still own the property and would have to maintain it, even if there's no football or soccer on there. And again, it's used by the public daily.
Well, do I could comment as well?
Go ahead, Mr. Gertz.
First of all, the the money, the stadium fund, I think that's where Dave Stevenson informed me that the contract related to that expired. He said two thousand and nine. I don't remember the exact date. But monies have been going in there that should have been taken and put into the capital, I mean, to the general fund for the purposes of taking care of these things. And in in effect, the capital or the general fund has suffered the consequences of having fewer monies going into that. It it does, if there's a decision to do something more with the stadium, uh, there's nothing to prevent council from creating and doing something in the future. This this fund is really should be extinguished. And there is another fund that exists in the city, and it's it's account number three forty-one. It's a stadium improvement fund. And uh it could be expanded. Uh, there's not only two hundred and seventy-five dollars in there right now, but uh that that fund could in the future, if we wanted to put money in there for other uses or start setting it up, uh, it it is available. It's not extinguished. That that fund is not going to be extinguished. It's only the stadium fund that related to the um, the the contract that existed back in two thousand and one. So uh, my view would be to terminate that fund, put the money into the general fund, because the general fund isn't spending all the money to take care of the maintenance for the last number of years. There's been nothing coming out of there to to uh to pay for it. And and the general fund has been suffering. So there's nothing to prevent council from the future if they wanna set something else up, if they wanna do something that's capital improvements, uh, if they wanna transfer monies uh from another uh, as uh Tom Lynn just said, if you wanted to take the money from the the sewer service fee fund, I wouldn't do it immediately cuz uh we're gonna have another conference call on Friday, but I am still have an anxiety about the money that's that as was told to me about the ten uh ten percent potential reduction in real estate taxes, which in my guesstimation, that's all I can do is about eighty thousand dollars. And uh, I don't know if we're gonna we're gonna be completely healthy in the earnings tax fund. Currently, we're thirteen percent behind, and uh I hope that all changes by July fifteenth, but I don't have the uh crystal ball that's gonna say that's gonna happen. I'm very optimistic cuz thanks to our administration in Washington and the hard work they're doing, they were projecting a downturn in uh employment, and it actually went up. So uh, if that trend continues and we wanna do something, that we grow and everything starts to straighten out by July uh September, October, we can always uh put money into this other stadium fund and we can create it. This point in time, it's logical to me just to close that fund out and be done with it.
Discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Um, mainly a question. Is there an immediate need in the general fund for this money? Like, are we gonna need it prior to July fifteenth? Anybody?
Well, current uh cur- currently in the general fund and the city earnings tax, that's the feeder fund for it. Um, let me pull it up. We have about seven hundred and fifty thousand combination with only about eighty thousand coming from this month so far. So I mean, not right now, but with the workers' comp money that came in and with some other patches, we're you know, Mel talked to, you know, what we're down. But we use April, the month of April, which is now July, to feed us through the end of the year. Um, and as we've talked about, the end of the year gets pretty tight for Patrick, myself, and you know, Tony talks about how in years past, like paying bills, sitting on bills to go into next year. People that are in the finance community for our city, we're not just worried about this year. It's next year too. Um, but we have a caution to it. Uh, so right now, today, no, I do not need the money. Will I need it later in the year? Only time will tell through discussions with the treasurer's office.
And it's it's my understanding that from Dave that we can put an ordinance up and transfer that money out at any time. Is is that correct?
That's correct. The the ordinance that uh I gave to Tony corrected some language that permitted us to do that. Um, unless you incur um a an obligation in that fund to pay for some improvement, you can transfer that money out because the purpose for the fund has been extinguished. Um, you know, the agreement that set the fund up is gone. Um, you know, it it we talk about maintenance items down there, but the maintenance has always been paid out of the general fund and should be paid out of the general fund. Grass cutting, lining of the fields, small repairs. Uh, I know we did pay, I think, for the uh we replaced some doors down at the stadium several years ago, and I think that money came from there, but I'm not sure. But uh, the fund was designed for bigger ticket items, um, and not for the day-to-day maintenance.
Mr. Fish Asher?
Yeah, I I had the uh the pleasure of touring the stadium back when we were talking a little bit more in depth about it. And some minor, some major repairs were brought up. I don't see why we don't leave the money in there and start looking at some of these, at least some of the smaller repairs and getting the place fixed up a little bit better.
And if there's a contract coming up, maybe the school will help us with those improvements.
Right, you know, the bigger ones, but like even like the uh, I think there were some doors on the uh the ladies stalls or something that were were starting to rust, you know, stuff like that. Why not take that out of that stadium fund? Leave it there and and put it towards some of that stuff.
And again, if we can make the improvements and Ursuline and other schools wanna use that for track meets, any money that they pay to rent the stadium can go back into the fund. And again, we make money off of it, so.
I could comment again, please.
And Mr. Gertz?
Yeah, that's all well and good, and I went through the stadium as well. Uh, but you know, those kind of items, um, we're we're really taking probably unless even if we uh settled this contract for the twenty-five thousand, whatever, seven hundred and twelve dollars. I think making sure that we have money to pay for labor and police and fire and um street maintenance and uh service department wages is a much greater and more important thing to do than to have a slush fund sitting back there on a fund that's already been exhausted in 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 the in the sense that it doesn't exist anymore uh and shouldn't exist. So I've I think we need to make sure we're solvent as much as we can, uh, as much as I like to be optimistic. I don't I I I think Sabrina's on a fantastic job of taking care of bills so they don't fold over into the next year. She's been doing that in the last two years. I don't wanna see us going back to the old problem when we we make an appropriation for a particular uh department, whether it be police, fire, uh parks, street maintenance and repair, the service department. And then in the first month, there are all these bills come in and twenty percent or twenty-five percent of their appropriation goes to pay bills that are from the previous year. And Sabrina's been doing an excellent job eliminating that issue, I think, and that's why I compliment her as I do. I I think we gotta look at what's necessities right now, not what's could be. I don't, I mean, I don't have any problem trying to fix the stadium up, but I think we gotta look at the prime tenant. And we gotta look at, uh, you know, some help. Somebody said the school's gonna, we could go to them for help, but they're they just had a meeting and talking about deficits that they're running, laying people off. And uh, I don't know, maybe even talking about another levy. So uh, I don't foresee that they're gonna be ponying up any money for capital improvements. I think that's a wish and a dream, pipe dream, really. So I I think we'd go forward, put the money in the general fund, try to make ourselves solvent, stay steady if we see that we wanna do something later in the year. As I said, there's still three forty-one. That's a stadium fund. Uh, we could we could reappropriate, put some money in there. Uh, if we get some calls and go ahead and make the repairs that maybe maybe need it. If we get contracts with other schools, uh, that'd be excellent to use it. Of course, it all depends on this new contract that you have. They the school's the prime tenant, you know, they get priority use over all the facilities. Uh, and I think that's another avenue of why we may wanna only have one reading on that tonight. I think it's more important to protect our our people that are employed than we worry about capital improvements at the stadium.
I have a comment, Chris.
Mr. Lindeman?
Just one thing. Uh, every time we've been in discussions for a contract with the school and the stadium, we've brought in uh how many hours the public works department puts down for cutting the grass and doing this and doing that, all the expenses that we can think of for the stadium and any park, et cetera. And and now that money we're negotiating with the with the school, they're taking it and saying, yeah, it's reasonable. Uh, you have to expend this amount of money to maintain the the stadium for us or for football, et cetera. And so that money, I think, was put into the wrong fund. Basically, I think the money should have gone into the general fund. I mean, that's where the the uh public works people are getting paid from. They don't get paid out of the stadium fund. So I just think it was put into the wrong place, and I and I it's my point to make the correction.
I don't.
Again, I agree with Mr. Gertz. If if uh uh, we want to repair part of the track or we have to have some kind of other maintenance, uh, come to council. Uh, it it should be a reasonable thing, and you just go ahead and do it.
Mr. Lynn?
Again, I don't disagree that we should take up, but we can remove some of that money from this fund. I do not wanna close this fund. That is where I'm coming from. I'm okay if we wanna develop an ordinance to take half the money out of there, but I do not and do not feel comfortable closing this fund.
Would you feel comfortable if we transferred the money into the three forty-one fund, some of it? Because that it's the name is stadium track improvement. It's a fund for the stadium track improvement, and you're talking about, well, we could use the uh stadium fund to improve the track, or we have a fund for that. Because we put the money in the wrong fund.
Okay, so make an ordinance to transfer it to that fund. But I'm just saying, I am not looking to deplete this at this time.
My. Chris, I got one more.
Go ahead, Mr. Fish Asher.
Yeah, I my biggest concern is I've and I've seen it happen. Cuz once it's gone, it's gone for good. And so as long as as long as we can maintain that, if it's a matter of, you know, I don't know how we ended up with two stadium funds, you know, that's before I was ever on council. Um but you know, if if we wanna transfer or combine those two, that's fine. But I agree with with Mr. Lynn that I don't wanna see the fund totally depleted unless it's a, you know, necessity to keep, you know, our our employees paid and stuff because you know, once it's gone, like I said, once it's gone, it's gone. You'll never see that come back again.
And again, uh, there's other.
I don't agree with you.
No.
And I would.
That's why there's seven of us.
I would just say the funds, like the sewer service fee fund that have five times the amount of money as this. So there's other funds that we can reach into if that becomes a problem. So this does, I mean, I understand. I wanna pay police. I wanna play fire. That's gotta happen. But I think there's other funds that are actually stronger than this fund. So I don't do not wanna deplete this fund. I'm okay with taking some money out, but not depleting this fund.
Anyone have anything new to say?
Well, I I only item I would say is what Mr. Stevenson said, the purpose of the fund is is been terminated because the contract listed with the school don't ever exist. So I've called a question. I I make a motion to adopt the ordinance. Let's look at things.
So we had a a third reading uh of the new ordinance. Um, Marla, can you remind me who uh made motion to adopt?
I made that motion.
So I think Tony just made.
Just read it, and that's it. Okay. Motion made by Mr. Gertz. Do I have a second?
Second.
But seconded by Mr. Lindeman to adopt the ordinance for the stadium fund transfer. Roll call.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Gertz?
Yeah.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Albrink?
No.
Mr. Lindeman?
Yes.
Miss uh Mr. Fish Asher?
No.
Mrs. Etichico?
No.
That ordinance does not pass. So uh, it will not come back up again unless it's in a new format and rewritten. Uh, we'll go to the next ordinance. Uh, we'll go to the next ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the safety service director to, uh, so sorry, yep.
Compensate, yeah.
Yeah, I was reading the wrong one. An ordinance authorizing the safety service director to compensate Kevin Knizner for accrued sick vacation and comp time and declaring emergency.
Motion to suspend the rule requiring a second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Mr. Albrecht to suspend the rule that requires a second and third reading, roll call.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
That motion passed.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lindemann, seconded by Mr. Lynn to adopt the ordinance, roll call. Oh.
Do I, I think, uh, congratulate Mr. Knizner on his retirement and he was a great employee, I hate to see him go, uh, retire. I appreciate that he's standing to take this over twelve months, that helps the city's finances, I think, it's a little spread. Of course, it doesn't hurt him either, he won't be getting hit with a forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollar, uh, additional income for two thousand and twenty, but it's a great place to work, you don't want me to.
Oh, I knew you'd say that, I was waiting.
Forget it, you got about fifty-six or sixty grand, so yeah, I worked at the wrong place. But anyway, I, I, I do want to see it pass, he's a good man.
Okay, so give me a roll call on that.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously in the ordinance number?
Two thousand and twenty, twenty-four. An ordinance authorizing the safety service director to hire K L new construction for erosion repair on Hunt Road for eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and then declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend a second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lynn, seconded by Mr. Fish Asher to suspend the rule that requires a second and third reading, roll call.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion, no doubt.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Mr. Lynn to adopt the ordinance, roll call.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz. Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, ordinance number?
Two thousand and twenty, twenty-five.
The additional, uh, motion made, uh, ordinance.
You want that one first?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the safety service director to compensate John Baguski beneficiary for accrued vacation and comp time and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lindemann, seconded by Mr. Lynn to suspend the rules that require the second and third readings.
Uh, Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion, no doubt. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Mr. Powell to adopt the ordinance, roll call.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
Yeah.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
Um, ordinance is adopted unanimously, uh, in the ordinance number?
Two thousand and twenty, twenty-six.
Okay.
And then.
Our last ordinance.
The last. An ordinance authorizing the safety service director to execute a lease agreement with Redding Community Schools with respect to field usage and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion made, made, made by Mrs. Etachico, seconded by Mr. Lynn. Requires a second and third reading, I'll take comments, Mr. Gertz.
Yeah, I did have some questions on this contract, the, um, committee did not review it, it was, just got it last night. I don't know what the rough would be, the school hadn't even said they would have cut it yet, I would like to have a first reading, but that's my comments, go ahead.
This is the same contract that we reviewed months ago. And, um, the reason declaring emergency is because practices will be starting soon for football. And they will need the field and games are being scheduled.
But there's an exclusion only to the lighting in the camp park on the contract, and I don't want us being, pay, having to pay for street, for the lighting at the Veterans Memorial Stadium, if something goes down and I don't agree with the fifty-fifty split on catastrophic problems. So I, that's why I can't support it at this time.
I'll take a roll call on the, uh, suspension of rules.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
No.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
And Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Yes. Motion passed, but here a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fish Asher, seconded by Ms. Etachico to adopt the ordinance, roll call.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Gertz.
No.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
Mr. Lindemann.
Yes.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Yes.
Mrs. Etachico.
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted in the ordinance number?
Two thousand and twenty, twenty-seven.
Can we make sure that the actual agreement is attached to that ordinance?
I have it.
Okay.
Did, did the resolution already pass? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, yes.
Carl, can I, I need to, Carl, I need a certified copy of that, do you have your stamp at home or no? I can't hear you.
Didn't know.
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it to you before the end of the week.
I have a four-year-old, I don't trust with it.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it, I'll, I'll probably have Chief Owens drop it off like he's done before.
Okay.
Okay, other business, I think Ms. Smith had, uh, had made a comment there.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, um, I just wanted to let everyone know that the farmer's market's going on every Friday from four to seven P M. And for senior citizens in town that, that are eligible, the Council on Aging is offering fifty dollars to use at farmer's markets, um, to see the application, to see if you qualify. You can go online to our Facebook page for the Redding Farmer's Market or you can call the Council on Aging directly and their number is five one three, seven two one, one zero two five. And you might have seen recently that we've teamed up with the City of Wyoming, their, uh, farmer's market person retired. So they're kind of supporting our market and, and they're doing a bunch of different activities, um, like rec activities. And we're co-sponsors with them for that, so there's fun events for all and we're making good regional relationships. So, um, those are the updates for me, thank you.
Mr. Fish Asher.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, um, just put it out there that I did receive some complaints regarding, uh, properties on Second Street and then a couple of them on Third Street. And I'll be getting with, uh, Rick Martin on those. I'd also like to, uh, thank administration and Mr. Martin for cleaning up the area behind Redding Road that faces that Second Street area. And actually, it's right next to where the, uh, farmer's market is. Because at one point, that would have been an ugly sight for the farmer's market with the, a lot of trucks and abandoned vehicles and, uh, trees growing through the, the abandoned vehicles. So it was all cleaned up and it, it looks a lot better now, so I want to thank administration and Rick for that.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to ask a rhetorical question to the law director if I could. Uh, I guess, you're still there, Dave, we don't have to.
You're still here.
How, how do we spend money from a fund that's conditioned upon a contract that doesn't exist? And when it did exist, I don't have it in front of me, but I can't find it. Uh, there was a school group that had to be a participant in it and there was a city group that had to participate, participate in either of which currently exists. So we have a fund that exists from my perspective that nobody could be spent from because the basis upon its dispersment is, is conditioned upon a contract that, that doesn't exist anymore. Am I thinking incorrectly or?
Johnny, I think you can transfer the money to the general fund at such time as you want to spend it. Um, you know, the question on, uh, you know, you could also transfer it to a capital fund to, i- if you choose to spend it on capital items for the stadium or whatever. Um, the purpose of the fund is no longer there, there aren't any obligations that remain to be paid out of it, which is why you can transfer it. Uh, and that's, you know, the basic answer to the question, you'd have to do that by ordinance.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, so didn't spend the money out of the stadium fund if you wanted to without having to move it to some other fund.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes. Um, go ahead, Mr. Gertz. Oh, who, who else wanted to talk?
Don Lindemann.
Okay, Don, go ahead.
I just want to mention that, uh, any swimming pool over twenty-four inches deep requires a permit.
Okay, very good.
One other question. What, can I?
Go ahead, Mr. Gertz.
What happens if the school wants to change the contract tomorrow night, we got to come back and redo the ordinance? Wouldn't have been wiser to wait to see if they want to accept the contract and pass on. Mrs. Etachico, maybe she has an inside track with the school, she's very connected with them, it appears. Maybe she knows that answer, do you? Is it going to fly through?
No, I really don't know, um, if they do make changes, then I will talk to Patrick and see what we have to go and do from there.
Well, I'd say we'd have to come back to council and revisit the ordinance because the contract is an exhibit in the ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you again for, uh, your evening and, uh, we'll do this again in two weeks. It'll be.
Fun.
What is it, July s- no, I'm sorry, three weeks, July seventh.
July fourth, yeah, July seventh.
July seventh, so, um.
Chris, I will not be at that meeting, I'll be out of town.
Okay, anyone else's agenda taking them away? Well, then I hope to see all the rest of you, uh, on the seventh.